Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board, Monday, June 23rd, 2014. We are at the River Street Firehouse. I would invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. First introduce the board. John McFadden to my far left, Michael Keane. I'm the Chair Greg Van Houten, this is James Carroll, Justin Corcoran, our Town Manager Stu Hurd, and Linda Bermudez recording. We're going to start. We cannot approve the minutes of June 9th. We don't have a quorum that was present at that meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or questions on that? There were a couple of name spellings we fixed, and that was about it. But I saw nothing. Okay, we're going to have to table that until we have a quorum present. Any questions on the warrants? We'll start with John.
Just, Stu, on the WEDA expense, could you just explain that a little bit?
Yes, and Mike Harrington is here, yes. Mike? WEDA, what does it stand for?
What's that?
WEDA, what does it stand for?
World Economic Development Alliance.
It's the World Economic Development Alliance, thank you. We are joining with BCIC and the Rutland Development Organization to become a member of this alliance, and they are basically a group that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, seeks out and provides prospects to various communities. It's a part of our marketing and search strategy.
So is it sort of lead generation? Is that lead generation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
James?
Nothing this week.
Justin?
I have nothing.
I have nothing either. Move on. We do have a public hearing on the Applegate Willbrook Pathway grant application that we'll be doing after citizen comments. If there are any citizens who'd like to address anything other than that, please come forward, state your name, and...
My name is Dave Frederickson, citizen, taxpayer, homeowner, and voter. I am here this evening to respectfully voice strong opposition to the Shire's proposed development between Silver and South Street, and request to be added to the agenda of the board's next meeting. Disappointingly, Mr. Van Houten and Mr. Hurd denied an earlier request to get this subject on tonight's agenda. The main reason we are here is because at the last meeting, the information Mr. Broderick presented was unavailable to the public and to the board, and we were unable to discuss or debate that information. The fact that votes were previously taken by a board without gathering and evaluating relevant information in an open and orderly process is a source of deep disappointment, and it's evidenced by the community's opposition. Petitions began, and as evidenced by the community's opposition, petitions began circulating, and in a short period of time, we have collected over 350 signatures in opposition to this project. That's more than the number of people who voted for the water bond. A second reason to get this on the agenda is Lisa Ryan of the Vermont Community Development Program recommends, and I quote, "Attending a select board meeting to ensure that your concerns are being heard and addressed." That's from a June 10th email. "We ask the board to do the right thing and add this subject to its next board meeting." Thank you.
Mr. Frederickson, if I can make a request. Clearly, we had a public hearing that was voted closed and whatnot. To put something on the agenda, I need to know what the direction is, you know, what the request is, if there's specific information you have a protest about that you didn't get or whatever. I'd like to know that, so that I can say, "We have an item on the agenda to discuss such and such," so I know what the proper legal procedure is. I can't just reopen a public hearing and start discussing something that is settled. However, we can certainly discuss something if we feel something was handled inappropriately, if there's another avenue in discussion, but I would need specific information as to what the agenda item being requested is. I'd be happy to entertain it.
We can send that to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So if we send that to you, we're on the agenda?
If it's legitimate, and I can put it on, not just, you know, we want to overturn a public hearing for no good reason, I can't put that on agenda, but if I have specific information that warrants an agenda item, that's why we're here.
Excuse me, I had a question.
Tim Morrissey, resident, taxpayer, and voter of Bennington, Vermont. What's your criteria? How do you determine if we send in a list of topics related to this project, and recalling the discussion in prior board meetings where information was sought, was not timely provided, and still remains open, and in fact, in some of the discussion that I observed on CAT TV, it was acknowledged information was not available? So frankly, members of the public, and I know some members of the board had misgivings as well. We simply want to go down a list of topics having to do with need and various impacts to the community that frankly, don't feel we had adequate information in advance in order to prepare and discuss before the board.
Okay, well, I would need something, that's what I would need to determine if there were, if there's criteria, you know, that stands up to that. I mean...
Procedurally, would it be a reopening of the public hearing, or would it be an agenda item?
I think it would have to be an agenda item to determine what the, if, and what the board decided to do with it. That would, that's my interpretation now. I'd have to look into that, but to just reopen a public hearing would take some, you know, some reason. So we may have to look at that at a meeting, decide if we, if there's grounds to go back to the public hearing, or what our course would be.
Steve McKenna, Bennington. I don't know why we have to give a reason. Mr. Broderick stood up and presented information that, at that meeting, we could not debate, we couldn't even look at while we were here, yet he's up there and able to speak to pass it. What we're looking to do is to prove to you that some of the information he provided was false. I don't know why we need to give a whole list of what we're going to discuss. If he didn't give you guys anything until at least that meeting, Mr. McFadden said, "We got this tonight, we didn't have time to go through with it." So I don't know why we have to if he isn't. It doesn't seem fair that we're all playing on the same field, so...
Well, I have to know what is on the agenda, I mean, what are we discussing? If I just put a topping on the agenda, to what end?
We're discussing that we do not want it to happen. He wants it to happen, I guess that's what he provided you with. We want to provide information to prove to you why we don't want it there.
At this point, there's a procedure in play. The grant application is in, so that organization has to determine whether or not they're going to put a grant together. Then it goes to the DRB, they decide whether or not that project's going to go forward. So at this moment, that's the procedure we're on.
Yep.
If you want to change that procedure, that's what I'm thinking, on what grounds do you want to change that procedure? What is your, if you have a complaint on how the public hearing was handled, or what the information is, that's, I just need to have that.
The information, the public hearing did not provide us with adequate information to be able to debate what Mr. Broderick was saying.
So you felt that you didn't have opportunity to substantiate the information in advance of the public hearing?
We couldn't prove whether what he was saying was true or false. It took me two weeks to get the application, to be able to read even what that was. June 5th, you guys and I got the market study. So how can we say, when he says there's a 2% rate, I don't know where he got that from, I don't know if it's true, we just sat there, we couldn't debate it because we didn't have the information, nor did you guys. So I don't know how you guys passed and voted yes for it without knowing the whole story behind it.
That was one of my biggest issues with the meeting as well. I mean, you said that you had enough time to study this, but we did get that presentation that night, and it took another two weeks, two and a half weeks, maybe even three weeks before we saw anything from Mr. Broderick, which was on June 5th. So I think that is what they're asking.
It's 80 pages worth of information that...
Release this now, and then you have a public hearing. You don't have a public hearing before people have time to actually do their research and make up their minds and decisions.
Are you saying that you found some specific discrepancies from what was presented? Do you like to address?
Possibly, yep.
I mean, I think that's what I'm looking for.
Why do you need that ahead of time, though?
Because the public hearing was handled and settled. I mean, if, this is...
The big issue is, we did not get the information ahead of time. That's the big thing. We're still...
I'll have to look and see what the procedure is in that case.
And as we mentioned, Lisa Ryan with the grants told us, because we've spoken to her, to come back to you guys, and here we are, we have information, we want to be able to present you that information, yet you're not allowing us to. So then, our next move is to go up to Montpelier, which we're planning to do, to that meeting, July 10th. She would like us to try to solve it locally, as would we, so we don't have to travel up there. The DRB is not till July 15th. We'd like to solve it where it began and be able to present our side of the information that we could not do at that meeting, because he did not give us the information to do that.
Could it be a citizen's presentation?
You can't vote on citizen's...
Can you tell us a little bit about the petition you have, and what it's attempting to do?
No.
Okay.
Well, I would do is...
I'm on your side here, you know, I'm trying to get some information, because I got somewhere I'm going with this. But if you guys, you know, we need you to be a little bit forthcoming also. I mean, if there's specific...
I'm afraid if we do, then, you know, he wasn't, why should we? We have information, we're just asking the same...
I'd be happy to have a second public hearing for you. If it was up to me...
We just want the same rights that he had. He came and presented stuff, that's all we're asking to do.
You know, and on the same token, you know, if you folks do want to have the opportunity to present some stuff, they need to be able to rebut also. So if we want to have a fair hearing, you know, you should have had it in advance also, but what works for one side needs to work for both, and you need to understand that as well.
Well, we'll tell you then, because, so he can do it. The information we're going to present has to do with the application and the market study, and the information we got on June 5th. The same information you have, so you have the information already, Broderick has it already.
I'd like to ask you one thing with respect to the discrepancies that you point out, that you include them when you present...
We will have props, we will be ready to go.
No, 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 if you can give it to us beforehand, so that we can, you know, take a chance at just looking at it.
It's not going to be that difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's just the same position. As much as John and myself want that information from regional affordable housing, and before we have to make a decision on it that night.
Yep.
I mean, I want to see what you guys have, so I can make an informed decision also. I didn't vote for the project, I think it's the wrong project at the wrong place, but I'd still like to see what you have for information. You're 150 signatures away from having an advisory question on a ballot, so you're almost there also.
And all we are trying to do is let people know about this issue, because unless you read the paper, there's neighbors that don't know about what's going on in the neighborhood. So for the most part, that's what we're trying to do, is just spread around what's going on, so people can make an informed decision.
Excellent. Thank you.
So how are we going to make a decision, so we're not going to allow this, how would, what's the process?
I've got to look into what the procedure would be and what are options.
Well, I think there's a legal question here. In order for the board to have reconsidered its decision to close the public meeting and vote, and follow its vote, that should have been done, the meeting after the vote was taken, and the motion would have had to come from somebody who was in the positive. That didn't occur at the last meeting, so now we're outside what the rules say we can do for reconsideration. So I've got to talk to counsel to see whether or not...
Yeah, I think we're going to have to look into...
I mean, I think it's one thing for the board to hear from these folks, but it's another thing for the board to act, and I'm not...
Right, and if we're going to do that, I think we need to be clear on what we can and cannot do if we're going to have people go through trouble making a presentation and...
So are we supposed to do something after the last meeting? Or would we have to pretend to do that, though?
Well, under the rules for board activity, if the board makes a decision at a given meeting, the following meeting, one of the members who voted in the positive can ask for a reconsideration. That takes a vote of the board. If the board voted positively to reconsider, essentially, that would reopen the public hearing. The unfortunate part is, is we've gone two meetings now without that vote, so now I have a legal question. I'm not sure the board can reopen the public hearing. It can certainly hear your concerns, and those concerns would then be forecast to the community, and obviously, to the DRB, which will have a formal public hearing, but I'm not sure legally that this board can undo what's been done.
So Justin and John would let it too?
No, it would have been anybody else. We couldn't have voted...
Would have been somebody who had voted, yes.
Somebody who was in favor of accepting the grant.
Okay, is he voting no?
Well, actually, not in favor of the grant, but in favor of closing the public hearing, correct?
Stu? Well, we closed the public hearing and voted to allow the grant to go forward. So there were two actions.
So someone who had voted positive on the grant question.
I think it is important for us to hear the different facts, though, because we can't just hide behind the rules if we're making a bad decision, so we need to weigh out both options, both sides.
Right, I mean, I just, if we're going to have the discussion, I want to know what our options are, and to what end we're having the discussion. I mean, because the question that was in front of the board was, if Shire's housing were to be granted the money, would we accept it and pass it through? That was the extent of the question, which we voted yes on as a board. So that's the question at hand, so what is our, you know, that's the only thing that's out there to overturn at this point. Do we have the option to overturn it, or is it simply a grievance hearing, where people are making statements that we can then pass on to the DRB, or to the grant application, or just for record? You know, I mean, I think it's fair for you to know what you're coming in to talk about, too, you know, and I don't, you know, I don't want to give people false expectations that they're coming in that presentation, "Tom, there's nothing we can do about it. Thanks for coming." You should know going in, as should we, what our options are.
There is an option, but it's further out. The board could reject the grant, should it be offered.
Right.
But I would like to be sure of that legally as well.
Yeah, and that's...
I don't want to step on my own tongue.
That's another direction, too. If you're accepting grants and then turning them down to last minute, it's not a good procedure. If we decide we're going to do that, I think we should decide that early on.
Okay, but I think, you know, the board can have the agenda item to hear their grievance.
Right.
But I'm not sure that...
To what end?
To what end.
No vote, just to hear it.
Yeah.
Following up on what Mr. Hurd just said, I'd like to clarify, then, the process going forward, because it appears in the board's mind, this plays out at the DRB?
It plays out in two places.
You said, you said there's options in the event the grant was awarded, not to accept it.
That is, I think...
I suspect there's also the ability to withdraw the application.
Well, the Shire's...
On that, then, there's been pointing to the DRB. I'd like to be clear, I want to hear what you consider to be the process going forward, where this plays out, and on what basis, then, the grant gets discussed and reconsidered, if that is appropriate.
Well, the grant is a separate process than the construction. The grant is funding, partially funding the construction. The construction project has to be approved by the DRB, so that's actually a grander conversation.
I understand that, but there's been, maybe unintentionally, a co-mingling here. I'm asking for clarity in the process, where we have the option, in that case, to have the discussion about the grant, and if it's appropriate, that to be reconsidered, versus what in my mind would be a different, perhaps, set of issues with respect to the DRB, where frankly, the horse is out of the corral at that point, and you're now tweaking around the edges here. I would like you to be clear what the process is going forward, if you would.
Stuart?
I have to check legal counsel.
I mean, from the process right now, is that they're applying for the grant, and then, and they're applying for approval by the DRB to build the project. Our approval was only to accept the money from the grant and hand it over to them for the $700,000 of the $5 million project. So that was, that was the extent of our conversation here. I think, you know, some of the people I talk to don't get the designation between the grant conversation and the building conversation. There's, you know, that land has been zoned, the application, you know, will have to be, you have to make sure that the project fits within the zoning, that it fits what the DRB, you know, designates as legit, and all that, and there's a public hearing. We're strictly talking about money. So, you know, that's the difference in the two discussions. So if, you know, if we decide that, for some reason, we want to reneg on our acceptance of the money, there are legal ramifications, where we have to make sure that we're, you know, in line with. I don't know what those are, you know, and I'm not saying that that's, you know, what I'm going to guarantee or anything.
Perhaps a better term rather than reneg is reconsider.
Reconsider, yeah, but...
So what is the next step here for people that are interested in understanding? What is the, you have to seek legal counsel.
I have to seek legal counsel. I have to talk to Rob Wilmington to understand what the process is, as I've said, that we cannot formally reconsider the application. That door is closed. Now, the question is, and that's a good point, can we withdraw the application, or can we refuse to accept the award if it is granted?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
I want to get home. About having to speak at the next meeting, they would have to, that's what you said, is after our meeting, if they wanted to reopen the discussion, it would have had to be the meeting after, correct?
Yes.
We didn't get the information to June 5th, so I don't know how the next meeting, you're supposed to speak about something, if you don't have the information until after the next meeting. And that might be a legal thing, too, is he didn't get information to us on a timely basis, so I don't know how they could, if even they wanted to, reopen the meeting, because they had no information until after that.
I can't answer that either, Gina.
All right, well, I want to do something, yeah. My name is Mark Simpson, resident of Bennington. Hearing some of this discussion thus far, I'm curious as to the board's position. At the moment, what I'm hearing said is that you are responsible for accepting a $700,000 grant. Does the board have a position about the project as a whole beyond the notion of simply receiving the money? And does the board anticipate having a position of yes or no on this, on the question of the project as a whole?
We have not established a position as a board on the project as a whole, it's strictly a discussion on the acceptance of the grant.
I mean, I think we had the opportunity to have individual opinions, but I don't know that any action, you know, from us, we don't really have a legal mechanism, I don't believe, to, as a board, to approve the project in one way or another. I mean, what was approved here was passing through of funds at the end of the day. I mean, not the status of the project, whether it's good for the community or bad for the community, I happen to personally disagree with it, but at the end of the day, really, what we are doing is accepting funds on their behalf.
I have to disagree, though, because we're not just going to accept money for no reason. We'd have to weigh out the options and decide whether or not the project is valid and good for the community.
Sure.
Not just going to say, "Okay, bring on the money and give it to these guys. We don't care what they do with it." That's not a good way to make a decision.
Well, I think our position was, we would be willing to pass through the money for the project.
Right, so we did, I think we all, as a board, individually decided where we stood on this position, and decided that the money was appropriate or not appropriate for this project.
Right, but I think that was the extent of it. It wasn't a, we didn't comment on the, say, the overall design or construction so much as the qualification for funding, or for us to pass the funding through. I mean, I think we all have individual, like Justin said, feelings on whether we're enthusiastic about it, or passive, or whatever, but the board as a whole has not made a statement to that effect, other than agreeing to accept the funds. So it would be a positive position in that, you know, if it went forward, we would not stop it, but...
The two options that you just spoke of, for individual approval, either enthusiasm or passivity, seem to indicate that there isn't room for a negative or walking away from this decision on the board's part, which is unfortunate, I think, for many of our points of view. Civics 101 question. What are the options open to citizens of that neighborhood who are deeply unhappy at the prospect of this significant change to our neighborhood? What ought we do, and how can we approach this so that we are at least heard, and perhaps have a chance to shift or alter the outcome that is otherwise untrained?
That, I would direct it to the hearing of the DRB on the subject, because that deals with the actual project in the community, and they would...
From Montpelier?
No, no, Bennington's Development Review Board.
Okay.
That's our own board, so that'll be, that's what, July 15th? Is that the hearing on that, or do we, do we know that? So that would be the, that would be the whole project, not just the funding, with the actual construction approval and...
And they can turn down the project in its entirety, if they want to.
If they, yeah, I mean, if they have basis for that, they have, they have, say, on the project itself, so...
When you say, "They have a basis for that," what does that mean?
What I'm saying is, I don't know all the ins and outs of the DRB's criteria for approval, but can Stuart can answer that?
The application has been filed with Dan Monks, our planning administrator, but he has not yet determined that the application is complete, so there's no hearing warned at this time.
So the July 15 date does not apply?
The July 15 date, I believe, is the date...
Montpelier's 10th.
I'm sorry?
Montpelier's July 10th.
Oh, July 10th. So the grant, the grant application will be heard by the Vermont Community Development Board on July 10th. If they agree to grant the monies, then Mr. Broderick and Shire's Housing must bring the project forward to the Development Review Board. And that is one of the local places where you get to talk about traffic and impact on the neighborhood and aesthetics, and all of the things that might be part of your concerns. And the Development Review Board holds a public hearing. People testify under oath as to what they are saying, as opposed to when the board is considering whether or not to make a grant application, it's a, it's a much less formal process.
Understood, good, thank you very much. Last question. The DRB meeting at which this project will be discussed is not yet scheduled?
That is correct.
It is likely July 15th, but...
Just Dan said it's likely July 15th, but that has not been warned yet, so it's not official.
And one of the requirements for the Shire's Housing as the applicant is, they must notify all of the abutters to the property.
Abutters being those immediately adjacent?
Immediately adjacent.
But those of us who are across the street are not abutters?
Uh, that's, no, probably not. If you're on the other side of Silver Street...
Depends if the property is directly across the street or not.
If the property is directly across the street from your home, then you are considered an abutter. If you happen to live up the street and you're not anywhere near adjacent to the property...
So we need to talk to our neighbors and make sure that we hear...
I'm sure that you have already got that network in place.
Thank you so much.
If the DRB meeting, Dan, happens on the 15th of July, what is the warning time?
I've been told they can't hear me when I speak out in the audience, so it'll be about, it'll be 15 days before, so it's going to be the next couple of days will determine whether it's complete, and then it'll be warned, and there'll be at least two hearings.
Thank you.
Is that, can I use some public information?
Yes.
Chris Wright, resident Bennington voter. I'm going to start out with a criticism of the board. You're always trying to get people to come down here and voice their concerns and ask questions, and at the end of the last meeting I was at, I wasn't able to ask all the questions that I had. I don't think that was fair to me. The people that were here, and the people that watch on TV, and on CAT TV, or read the minutes of the meeting. I had a few short questions. As a matter of fact, the answers were longer than my questions, the answers took up my time. There were complicated questions, and the answers were complicated, but that wasn't my fault. I had two short ones that I knew would slip through quick, and I yielded because out of courtesy to everybody. I don't think I should have had to, I should have been able to ask my questions. You want people to come down here, but when they get here, you don't want them to talk. So how do you feel about that?
Mr. Wright, I apologize that you feel that way. I felt the conversation was drifting towards early design subject matter on the issue. We were trying to focus on the bond and the issue, the design that existed, and you are right, your questions were short and concise, and the answers were... and concise, and the answers were long and getting more and more involved. But we were getting back, we were getting way back into early site selection and things like that. And there were several people who still wanted to ask some questions about the bond and specifically. So that was, you know, that was my request, that you allow them to go. I do have a disk here for you with the engineering studies on it that you can enjoy, because there's quite a bit of information on there. And I appreciate, I do appreciate, appreciate your interest and, and your, your questions. I was just, I wanted to make sure that people who would come with questions on the vote and on the bond that was on the ballot got a chance to speak. And I just felt that we were starting to drift away from that. And, you know, as good as your questions were, I felt we were getting away from the, the point of the bond hearing.
I've been a member of private and public meetings in the past. I've been a gatekeeper, a timekeeper. I've run meetings. I've participated in the meetings. Anybody who ever had the floor had the floor until they were done. It didn't matter. We set time aside so that everything was answered. So, I mean, what's my time limit tonight?
I think, sir, what we were just attempting to do was give everybody a fair and adequate amount of time to speak. You'd had the time for floor for quite some time. We had more people that needed to get up and have an opportunity also, and three other agenda items that we were supposed to get to in a timely manner that night also.
I, I think, as, as important as it was in the vote and the money, I think that anybody that had anything would have stayed here as long as they had to.
I appreciate your position, and we do appreciate you coming out and asking questions. You know, it's important for our community to be involved. But at that, at that point in time, I think it was important for us to try and move on and get into some other folks that had questions.
I think a lot of people are discouraged by that.
Well, I'm sorry you disagree.
I mean, it's probably why more people don't come down here and talk, because if they think they're going to be told they can't clarify things, they're, they're probably just going to stay home, watch on TV. Maybe they won't even watch on TV. Maybe they don't care. Okay, now I have some other questions.
Okay.
What does the board know about the solar project on Bonny Road? Anything?
This was the.
You asked, you asked that at the last meeting, I believe.
This is the change of ownership question you had asked about.
I, I asked you if you knew anything about the status of the project. Do you, do you know anything two weeks later?
I don't think we know anything different from what we.
I don't know anything different than what we knew two weeks ago. What have you got?
Well, maybe we'll talk to Dan. What do you know today that you didn't know then?
Dan, you want, can you come up so we can hear?
Uh, there's been no change in status of the project. They're putting together an application to the Public Service Board.
Did you find out about the change of ownership?
There was no change of ownership. There was a change in name of one of the funders.
Okay. What's the process from here on out with that project?
That, that project is under the exclusive jurisdiction of the Public Service Board. You'll be able to testify before them, but there is no local process. It's exclusively a Public Service Board project.
Okay, so there's no permits?
No, no permits.
Okay, how about the, now, Green Mountain Power hasn't agreed to it yet?
I don't know about Green Mountain Power's position on it.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Harrington, Bennington Economic and Community Development Director. Just wanted to give out a quick thank you to all the agencies and organizations that played a part in this past weekend, the great race. For those of you who saw the event, it brought about 4,500 people into downtown Bennington at the Bennington Station municipal parking lot. And I just wanted to give a quick thank you to the fire department, the Bennington, Better Bennington Corporation, and the Bennington Area Chamber of Commerce. Without their help, I don't think it would have been the success that it was. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks.
So to this board, will we have a response back by legal advice as to how this is going to go forward? I think it's very important for this board to understand, this isn't just residents not my backyard. These are signatures from all over the community, hundreds have been gathered, there's hundreds out there still being gathered, that are very concerned with where the leadership is taking us in this community. Usually in a public hearing, they should be transparent. They should have given time. I have never, have rarely seen in this meeting setting, 10 or 12 people to come before this board, pretty articulate with questions they had. And all I'm hearing is, it was about the money. This issue is very convoluted at this point. We've got meetings before meetings that we're deciding on pertinent information, and then I guess we go back, but you've already decided you will accept the money. There is a history in this community, and there's projects that we have, one in particular, right or wrong, that we didn't take the grant out on the West End a few years ago for a federal grant. There needs to be some direction from this board where this community is going for the betterment of all of the community. So I would like to know where we are going to, when we will get an answer, because as I'm looking at the dates, one's on the 10th of July, one's the 15th, the public hearing, and normally at a public hearing with that much information that came before you, you should have said, because we were under the impression that you were on this timeline, and yet it wasn't on anyone's agenda for the next three weeks. You could have respectfully, for the people that came here, you could have actually said, we will table it to the next meeting. And sometimes there is a period of three to five days that you also allow other folks that couldn't be at the meeting to respond to you, to actually take the information, if you really care, under advisement to make a valid decision for this community. So when are we likely to hear from the, from legal counsel where we're going in this direction on this issue?
I, I can't answer that question, Mary.
Is it likely this week? Is it next month? Is it after the project has the shovel in the ground? When might it be?
Well, it'll, it'll be before the next meeting of the select board. It will not likely be this week, but it'll be most likely the week following. And I will get that information to the board and to those of you who have spoken here tonight so you understand what the legal questions are. It doesn't mean that you can't come to the July 14th meeting as a group and have your grievance hearing before this board if this board decides that's what it wants to do.
I'm a little confused by that question. You're waiting for legal, but we might be able to come before and do a grievance?
You can always, citizens can always speak in front of the board. And I want to be clear, a citizen speaking to the board carries no less weight than an agenda item. I mean, just because we don't put something on the agenda, the fact that you come in to speak doesn't mean that carries no weight. I mean, it's a legitimate comment, public comment.
Quite honestly, Greg, I believe the concern for a lot of citizens that have watched on TV are concerned that they get shut down if they're not talking about a topic that is of interest or they're going a different direction than the board wants them to go. So that is a concern that I hear on a regular basis. So that was why respectfully, people were asking to be put on the agenda, to actually be heard, to actually have this board have a direction that hopefully is positive for our community.
Well, I think you understand my question about what the topic would be. I mean, I would, I would like something specific as to what, why it's an agenda item, what, what the complaint is or what the request is to make that.
That would have been wonderful if these folks had had the same opportunity.
To a point that we, we had, the DRB.
Yeah.
Isn't having the meeting or hasn't called their meeting because the application's not filled out, correct?
Correct.
So if any time that we open this up to the community to have a discussion, shouldn't we have all the information 15 days ahead of time before we call a meeting? So that way, John Broderick's information coming through on June 15th, the earliest that we could have possibly had that meeting would have been today?
No.
We can't do that.
Well, we can. It's a board policy. There's a statutory limit for, for DRB decisions. Those are all laid out in the law, what you must do in order to get before the Development Review Board. It's a quasi judicial meeting. It's testimonial. It's very formal. In this case, we've had two public hearings on this application. The first, which was approved by the board, the Vermont Community Development folks asked us to rehear it because there were some concerns about the language in the warning not being adequate. And it had to do with some of the formal requirements in the warning. So we had a second public hearing on that same issue. The board heard the application, heard from the residents, and voted to support the grant application. Public hearing was closed.
I guess what I'm asking is what's the limit? I mean, if, if on this last Monday or the last meeting, we had our, our discussion on the water project and we gave absolutely no information ahead of time, and then we just had a presentation in an open meeting for the town, that wouldn't really serve a purpose. And I know that's not how it was. There's plenty of information out there well ahead of time, and people had a month and a half, two months to read about it, discuss it, and, and come to us with good information. So we need to draw that line. If there's going to be a presentation with information and facts, I think it should be brought for 15 days ahead of time before we call a meeting. And if they can't get that in by their due date, that shouldn't land on the community. It shouldn't land on the board.
We agree. I, I think that if the board wants to adopt a policy that in the future, where community development fund applications are requested, and they must, they must have the support of the town before they can go forward, then if you say so, we will tell the applicant that we will, to expect two hearings. One, presentational, then the board will take time out, wait for the next meeting, and hear it again. And I think that's, that's appropriate. You do that on ordinances.
We've been trying to do.
You do that on some other things, where you've already established a policy, how you do that. In these, in these grant applications, you have not established that kind of a policy. And if that is your choice, then feel free to do so. We'll carry it out.
We've been trying to do that as to, as to not vote the first night it's applied. And this is actually one of the subjects that.
Right.
Got that going.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we understand each other.
Okay.
The last comment. Don't you find it funny that he didn't give you the information? If we're willing to try to get on the agenda again because we found holes in what information he gave us, don't you think it's funny he didn't give you the information ahead of time?
At the public hearing, yeah.
What I don't understand is this. He had warnings of a meeting. One went through, and then they had to do another. 15 people spoke against it. Against it. It was warned in the paper twice. Why did you pass it? We wouldn't be here if you just listened to the people. Isn't that what you're supposed to do? You know, we're going through all this rigmarole, having to go to Montpelier, having to get signatures, and fighting over something that we shouldn't have to fight over. You said, it's not a game. It's not who scores the most points. Well, majority showed up and said what they said. We don't want it. And you still allowed it to go through. Why?
Okay, but I'd like to address that. You know, we, we rely on the best information that we have at hand at the time. Wait a second, let me finish. Let me, I know, but, you know, we. That's, that's a valid point. And the information that you've said that you have that contradicts what Mr. Broderick presented, I, it's important.
You know, when he presented his facts now, did you read the 80 pages to see where he got this information from?
I did not read every bit of it. I did not. Let me please finish. You know, we're, we're elected to represent all of the people of Bennington, not just 15 people that show up. And we have our best, I think it's fair to say that we have your best interests in mind. And it's important, and I'm grateful that you're here to bring this up again, and it will be reconsidered. We're not, it's not perfect.
Anyone else from Citizens have anything to add tonight? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Our, our next subject is a hearing on the Applegate-Willbrook Pathway Grant Application. Let me give Mark Anders a chance to get up there. I just want to give this disc to Mr. Wright.
Somebody remember?
I think he lives on, on Bonny Road as opposed to the Silver Road. Yes.
At some point, you gotta.
It is questions of, tell me what the elevation is on Presley. Come on, tell me.
Right.
Come on.
Okay, so, I thought I was pretty serious. So my name is Mark Anders, and I'm the transportation planner at Bennington County. Kind of shaking something up that we didn't have time to do last select board meeting because we weren't on here.
Yeah. Mark, can you speak a little louder?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'll actually move this over sometime and connect it. So, um. I'm here to talk about a project that we're working on, specifically a grant application. And it's for the Vermont Agency of Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Grants. They come up, they've come up annually the last couple of years. And the reason, the reason the reason the commission got involved in this is the Molly Stark School reached out to us, and they said they had a problem with absenteeism from kids who live at Applegate apartments. And the problem is that kids from Applegate are bused to the Molly Stark School, even though it's less than a half mile away. And when kids miss the bus, they often miss school because there's no way for them to get to school. So they wanted us to look into solutions for better pedestrian connections to Applegate. That's how the project came about. So we ended up doing a feasibility study, and this grant application is a result of the feasibility study. So the problem statement for the feasibility study is there is no safe pedestrian access to Applegate apartments. So what I mean by that is, if I can get my laser pointer to work, so Applegate is here. There are two roads that connect to Applegate. There's Orchard Road here, and there's Harwood Hill Road here. So that's how you get in and out of Applegate. So both roads are absolutely terrible for walking. They're both dangerous to walk on. This is Orchard Road, and there are embankments on both sides, and there's very little shoulder, as you can see. So garb rail forces people to walk in the travel lanes of Orchard Road. There's very poor sight distance. Most of the road is curved. People really fly, fly along, and it's very unsafe. The road is also isolated. They're not, there's only two houses along most of it, and those houses are very far, sent far back. So it's, it's not the kind of place you would really want elementary school kids to walk. The other road is Harwood Hill Road. Of course, there's the rail overpass, and I would not recommend for anybody to walk under this. It's very, very dangerous for pedestrians. There's a lot of traffic. Cars really fly through. The sight distance is really bad because of the structures here and also because of the hill. So clearly, that's, this is not something you'd want your 11-year-old kid to walk under to get to school. So that's, that's the problem. So the second question is, why is this a problem? Why is this a problem for the town? The reason it's a problem is that Applegate is actually a major residential neighborhood in Bennington. There are 104 units in Applegate. 254 people live there. 89 kids live at Applegate. This is not just a few houses. It's a major residential neighborhood. And there, all around Applegate, there are all these destinations. You know, there's all the stores, there're jobs, there's estate buildings. People are trying to walk in and out of Applegate. And of course, there's the school. And in the Bennington Town Plan, it says, since Applegate is a neighborhood, I would consider it a neighborhood. Wherever possible, neighborhoods shall be linked by pathways and sidewalks. It's not, so it seems like this project fits in with that goal pretty clearly. And also, there's a real need. This is, this is a bridge that people use, residents of Applegate use to get in and out of Applegate. And I think this really looks like something from the developing world. I don't think Bennington's infrastructure should really look like this, but this is what. what they use to get in and out. I think it's especially ironic, since this is next to the hundred-million-dollar bypass. You know, a couple of overhead sites in the bypass could build an entirely new facility these people could use. And of course, the biggest problem is the, the lack of access to Molly Stark School. So, that's the, uh, another problem is, a lot of transportation projects we're working on now have to do with making people, giving people the opportunity to be physically active. You know, if you're a kid growing up in Applegate, you really can't leave unless you get a ride somewhere. And because we have infrastructure like this in this country, the rate of walking to school has declined dramatically. It's about a third of what it was in the early sixties. And this is, probably seen all this before, but in nineteen fifty-eight, this is a rate of type-two diabetes. This is an epidemic in Bennington County, actually all over the country. Nineteen fifty-eight, less than one percent of the population had type-two diabetes. In twenty-ten, I mean, just in Bennington County, eleven-point-four percent of the population has type-two diabetes. Not all of those cases are diagnosed. A lot of people have it, and they don't know they have it. And one reason why healthcare is so incredibly expensive now and escalating quickly is the cost of diabetes. In twenty-twelve, in the United States, we spent two-hundred-and-forty-five billion dollars. Most of that is medical expenses, some of that is lost productivity. And the last statistic on this will give you, just to kind of make the case that the health, public health argument does benefit taxpayers, every dollar spent on building walking paths and trails in Vermont could save approximately three dollars in obesity-related medical expenses. And that's a study from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, a very reputable foundation in the meantime. So, in the feasibility study, we sort of thought about three possible solutions to solve the problem in the problem statement, which is lack of pedestrian access. So, the option one would be a new sidewalk along Orchard Road. And this was rejected because Orchard Road is very long, because of the big embankments would require a tremendous amount of fill to be brought in to build the sidewalks. It'd be a very, very expensive and time-consuming project. So, option two would be put some kind of pedestrian facility along Harwood Hill Road. And the problem with that, of course, is the rail overpass would make it very expensive to build something. There's also a bridge here, and the bridge is narrow. That would be expensive to deal with. And also, it's a very long way. It's a much longer distance to the school, and the school is our primary objective for this project. So, the third alternative was just to build a simple path that connects Applegate to Willowbrook Drive. And kids could walk from Applegate to Willowbrook and get to school. It's interesting that kids from Willowbrook just walk to school. The path would connect with a municipally-owned road, Willowbrook Drive, also town, which is also known as Town Highway eighty-six. And one of the requirements for this grant application is that it connect, a path connects with municipally-owned, municipally-owned facilities. So, this satisfies that requirement. So, this was the preferred alternative that we came up with in the feasibility study. We also found that the project is feasible. The two big issues with feasibility are usually right-of-way. So, this path crosses three properties, and Applegate Apartments and Willowbrook Apartments, Bennington Housing Authority, Housing Vermont have signed an agreement saying they, they accept, they would accept the path. I've met with the property owners, and they would be willing to, to sign an easement or a lot line adjustment. I mean, it's not a done deal, but they, they were not objecting to the project. And as far as curbing, I think one reason the path was never built is it crosses a wetland and a couple of streams. We did talk to the Army Corps of Engineers, and they said all we need is a conditional use termination. We'd have to redelineate the wetlands, and they did nothing. That would be an issue if we used helical piles to support the boardwalk sections of the path, which we're planning on doing. So, we found the project was feasible. And this is the drawing, the conceptual drawing done of the path. It was done by Jason Dolmich of MSK Engineering. He's also, you're familiar with him. He also worked on the water project in Bennington. And it's gonna be a really, really nice path. I'm really excited about the conceptual design. It's gonna be eight feet wide, which is the minimum for bike, bike and pedestrians, so people, kids could ride their bikes on it. It has two boardwalk sections, two long boardwalk sections. And it'll be hard-packed, the rest of it will be hard-packed gravel, and all of it will be eight feet wide. It's gonna be lit. One of the things the school district and Applegate-Willbrook all wanted was a path that was safe and lit at night. So, one of the big expenses is, we have a really nice pedestrian-scale lighting system for the path. So, this is a, another boardwalk that was built using helical piles. Our path will be wider, I think this is five feet, ours will be eight feet. But this sort of gives a little bit of an idea what it'll be like. Ours will also have railings where necessary to comply with EVA. But it's gonna be really nice, I think. Very excited about it. And this is the view. It's actually beautiful down there. This is, it's gonna be a great public facility that will be open to all residents. Really, really nice. And also, it's gonna kind of leverage a lot of other projects that we have in the works. We're working on the, the Bennington Path, the so-called Ninja Project here. This is the, this is the path I was talking about, and this is the Ninja Path. And also, the Cochrane Drive pedestrian project is here. So, this, this path would give all these residents access to these other facilities that we're talking about. So, kind of leverage other investments. So, if we got the grant, we would have to do it as a VTrans LTF project. We do a lot of those projects. The unfortunate part is, it's a complicated process. You have to dot every i, press every t. So, they tend to be a little more expensive to do a project that way. The cost estimate to do it as an LTF project is a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. That includes design, construction, right-of-way acquisition, legal fees, lighting, project management. So, that's the bad news. The good news is it would only cost, the, the, there's only a thirteen-thousand-dollar local match, it's just a ten percent match. So, and the really good news for the town is that we have lined up the local match from BRCRC. We're willing to give a thousand dollars just as a gesture of support. VTrans really pays attention to what the Regional Commissions think about projects like this. The Bennington School District has agreed to cover four thousand dollars of the match. And Housing Vermont, who owns Applegate, is willing to cover seven thousand dollars or the difference if the project goes over budget. So, the entire local match is, is, is met. So, what we're asking the board for is to be an applicant for this grant, and also to accept the easements, to hold the easements for the path. Those are the two conditions that VTrans wanted to make it, to make the application. So, that's basically my presentation. Any questions?
Anybody on the board have any questions, sir?
Yeah, just the, the eight-foot-wide path, you, you expect the traffic on that to be going all, the foot traffic going all one way at the beginning of the day, all one way at the end of the day? Is it gonna be wide enough for foot traffic in both directions?
Yes. Well, the minimum for a sidewalk is five feet. And five feet, it allows people to walk comfortably, to pass each other, or to walk, have two people walk side by side. The minimum for a multi-use path, where sort of a bike and a person can pass, pass is eight feet. Ten feet is the ideal. It's more money. You know, ten feet would probably be better, but eight feet is kind of what you can get away with. And I think a lot of people are gonna use this path, but I don't think it's gonna be like, you know, a path in a major city where you have tons of people competing for space.
It seems that, yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna mitigate diabetes with this, but you will take care of a public safety issue. Right?
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is not gonna solve the diabetes problem, but, you know, you know, it is, children are especially vulnerable to, to obesity. And, you know, it's like, once a child becomes obese, it's, it's very hard to correct it later in life. So, it's really trying to target projects that allow kids to be active.
I have a question for you, sir. With respect, I'm, I'm just curious about any, any information with the respect that you may or may not have with pedestrians walking the current route that we have, if people have been struck, or hit, or anything. I, I agree with your point that this at least mitigates the safety hazard, but I wonder just if, you know, if there's any information that you might have.
I don't know personally of anybody that's been hit, but I will say Vermont's a little behind some other places in a lot of the accident statistics, or just know it'll be a fatality or an injury, and they're not, it doesn't specify whether...
I agree.
Well, we did have a citizen, we did have a citizen in front of us whose dog was struck out there while they were on Orchard Road. And if you've been out there...
I was just curious. You know, I, I have.
Yeah, there's no place to go.
Smart drive.
Yeah, it's not a good drive. I was actually out there one, when I was coming down on the highway, and one of our police cruisers spun on, on black ice down there in the winter, and I got off the highway and went to check on them, and there was nowhere to go. You know, we were out there in the road, and you couldn't even get off the road with the guardrails there and stuff. It was pretty scary.
There's no, uh, what's...
It's a long stretch too on Orchard Road. You can pick up speed.
There's no breakdown lane, nothing.
No, there's nothing.
There's three feet.
I got a chance to look through it and think pedestrian, pedestrian access is really important, and I have no problem at all.
Mark, what's the construction material?
Um, the, the path will be hard-packed embankment. And the boardwalk, I'm not sure what the, we, we haven't done final design, this is just a conceptual design. I would have to ask Jason what he's meant for the, for the construction material. I, I don't know.
Just one point that I wanted to reiterate. We did mention this last time. We do have an agreement with Housing Vermont to maintain the pathway once it's built, so the town wouldn't have any maintenance responsibility. I just wanna make sure you guys knew about that.
Good. Anybody else have questions?
You did a good job, and these type of projects are one thing that I was hoping to see more of when I was running to be on the board, so glad to see it coming through, and I think it's very needed.
Great, thank you. I think getting kids to school is a noble gesture.
Alive.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the grant application.
All right, we have a motion. Second. Justin with second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate you throwing that in at the last meeting, getting us up to speed, so we had some time on that. Appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, the next item is the BRCRC Town Solid Waste Management Contract. So, wanna lead us into that, Stuart?
Sure. This came out to you either prior to or at the June ninth meeting, depending on whether or not you were available before. This is something that the board considered, not in detail during the budget process back in January, and actually agreed to place twenty-five thousand dollars into the solid waste budget, allowing us to consider this contract proposal from Bennington County Regional Commission. The proposal is relatively straightforward. The BRCRC is proposing to simply take over all of the administrative efforts that are now housed in my office, related to our solid waste activities, planning and management. We have already agreed and contracted with BRCRC to develop a new solid waste implementation plan that will conform to the new materials management plan that I handed out a little bit of at the beginning of the meeting. It gives you an idea, if you read it, what towns who operate transfer stations or solid waste districts are facing into the future. And there are, the requirements are growing and growing and growing. And so, this is an opportunity for us to ultimately work collaborative, colla, yeah, work with eight other communities in a, in a nine-town consortium, provided that the whole group holds together. Currently, BRCRC represents the North Shire towns. It does not represent Woodford, Bennington. It does some work for Shasbury and Powell.
Correct?
But they're not part of, formerly part of the agreement, but we're, they're also considering joining the group. They are part of, I think, the solid waste implementation planning opportunity. So, we are working towards a countywide plan for solid waste management. By the town contracting with BRCRC, we're putting our facilities and our operations in their hands for administrative purposes, but also, it will allow us to consider other opportunities to collaborate, both on household hazardous waste collection days. On the paint drop that you saw this past weekend, we had a hundred-and-sixty cars come through in a four-hour period, a hundred-and-twenty-one from Bennington, the remainder from all over the county, because this was an opportunity to unload latex paint, which is clearly not something that you expect to be taken in a household hazardous waste collection day. Going forward, we hope to be able to have those folks available at the HHW days as well, so it'll be a continuing basis. Costs will be shared, basically per capita. I provided to you some of the background that BRCRC now uses to develop their cost-sharing processes and how they arrived at the twenty-five-thousand-dollar number. And we're here tonight, and Jim Sullivan may wish to address this as well, but I'm seeking your approval to allow me to sign the agreement, essentially effective July one. And we've already had a preliminary meeting. They're, they're going over the operations and administrative efforts that I now undertake in my office. And we would simply, under this agreement, turn those over to them, and we would become a partner in this effort.
Okay. John, any questions for Stu, or Jim could probably answer anything if beyond that more specifically. Now, this is something we went over at the budget meetings, and we had a meeting earlier, I think it was late last year.
What was the dollar figure that we were looking at, Tammy, when?
Twenty-five thousand.
A ma, a major part of this, correct me if I'm wrong, has been the implementation of the food scraps piece out of the garbage stream.
Uh, the, well, the, the new materials management plan is a ninety-six-page document. I'm through the first chapter, and we received it just three or four days ago. It deals with everything from recycling to reuse to removal from the waste stream. Food scraps is one thing. Tam, we are fortunate. Tam is working on developing a composting situation where we will be able to be a part of that and be able to use that facility to assist Bennington in meeting that goal. But there are, there are a whole host of other goals in this plan that goes to educational outreach, reuse of materials, reduction of other materials that are in the waste stream, removal of, for instance, paper products from the solid waste stream. Because they're finding, and I think the graph showed, twenty-two percent of the solid waste that goes into landfills is paper products. So, you've got this whole machine tumbling downhill out of Montpelier, and, and we're standing right in the, in the crosshairs.
Michael, David?
How do I put this? It, it looks to me like a, an ideal beginning of a great shared services agreement, which I think is an economical way to do anything. What are the implementation challenges, number one? And I briefly asked you a question a little earlier today. What about the governance of this? If you're one of nine entities in a consortium, where does, where is the leverage, and how does the decision-making happen going forward? Maybe Jim could...
Currently, we're rather an informal group at the present time. We have a representative from each of the municipalities that are involved in, or potentially involved. I can tell you that there is reticence on the part of some of the smaller towns that are currently operating their own transfer stations or their, and, and running their own facilities. They're concerned about giving that up to a, a greater number of people to control. It's a very similar argument that we hear with school boards, and every other time there's a merger discussion. It's, you know, I, I don't wanna give up my, my authority and my territory. So, we haven't really worked out how this will work formally on the SWIP implementation plan, the solid waste implementation plan. It's one, one vote, one person. So, we're all equal at the table, and BRCRC is providing the, the professional advice and wording. To go beyond that, this agreement simply deals with the town of Bennington and BRCRC and our relationship. If it grows into a greater governance structure, I, I think that's something that we would have to talk about and, and, and understand what its implications are for the future. to talk about, and understand what its implications are for the future. But there are, there are some real opportunities here. I can tell you that I hear from people who live in Shaftesbury, who work in Bennington, they would love to be able to use our recycling facilities. But because our taxpayers underwrite those facilities, we can't allow that. They wanna bring their trash to us, that's fine, because it's a pay-as-you-go. But recycling is another problem, and so, we've had to turn those people away. But if, down the road, a year or two, or three, we can find a way to make that work for everybody, I can see an opportunity here for savings for all of the towns that are involved and are willing to participate.
I think it's obvious that somebody's gonna have to manage this, and if we can get everybody kinda together to try and find a collaborative way to make it more effective, we should go forward without carrying all the burden.
Well, my understanding, as I recall, is that we were, we were gonna be reducing our administrative efforts in the waste management field if we went this route.
But I will be participating on the committee.
But you'll be participating on the committee. Okay. And then, we were looking for savings in collaborations with other communities. The next step, if I'm not mistaken, the big step was basically, was based on everybody jumping in, which Mayor might have.
That's true.
And this initiates it, whether or not everybody else jumps in to get something rolling.
Right.
Is that correct?
And I think that there's, there may be some of that, well, let's see what Bennington's gonna do.
And how long is the contract period for?
This is just, I wrote this to be just one year.
Okay.
And then, with an option to renew, based on experience and creative partnerships.
Great, I mean, I think that's, I think that sounds good. It's gonna give us an opportunity to see how this, how this group plays out. I mean, we'll try it for a year. We have a cost to implement this, this plan anyhow, regardless as to who does it. You know, we could reevaluate it. If it doesn't go the way everybody thinks it's going to, but I think it's, I think it's a good, good process at this point, so I'm in favor of it.
Doodle.
We looking for consensus?
I would need a motion authorizing me to enter into the agreement.
I'll make that move.
So moved.
Second.
Who got first? Justin, I think, did you make the motion? Because you went first. Gotta make sure it's Justin made the move, second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor? That is five.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Okay. Set the sewer, water and sewer rates is our next agenda item.
This was, this was in your packet last time, and is one of the ones we tabled because of the length of the meeting, but I am very pleased to present to you a proposed water and sewer rate for FY 2015 that shows no increase in either rate. And I would need a motion to accept that.
A motion to accept it and waive the reading of the.
Second.
Well, don't get to the borrowing yet, that's different.
That's the bond. Okay, we're motion to accept the sewer rate.
The setting of the sewer rate.
And a second from Michael Keane. Any discussion? All in favor? That is five.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
And now, onto the rec center borrowing, Mr. Chair. We currently have, of the $600,000 that we borrowed with voter approval, we have been paying it down annually, and I think I've been keeping you informed at the end of the year how much we're able to pay off on this, attempting to pay it off without actually having to go to the bond bank. We have 10 years in which to do that. We're down to a balance of $282,113. What we're offering tonight is a bond anticipation note, essentially, which rolls over that debt for another year. We will pay interest at a relatively small percent, 1.4% per annum, and I don't think Melissa has given any idea at this point whether or not we'll have sufficient funds left over in the general fund to make another payment this year, but we'll certainly keep you informed as we move forward. So, I would be looking for a motion to waive the reading of the documents and simply circulate them for your signature.
This seems to be going as planned.
It's, we're doing very well. I'm very pleased.
We have a motion from Michael, for a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Like the rate?
All in favor? That is five. Motion passes.
And I, I'm sorry to do this, I didn't mark the pages again, there are three pages that require your signature. Stuart, manager's report. I don't have a manager's report this evening.
No. Okay. Then we'll go right to other business. John, do you have any other business you'd like to?
Just looking at economic development, I'm wondering if you've been able to populate your spreadsheet with all of our top employers, and shake hands, and make some introductions.
We continue that process, we have.
Michael, come on, please.
We do have that list that went around, we populated it with contacts for each business, and we've begun the process of reaching out. I can tell you, you know, beyond the ones we've already talked about, we've also reached out to places like Abacus and Global Z as well. So, we're making progress in that, and we'll continue to update you as those conversations go on. And I will say, there have been some additional conversations that have been had by my participation at the BCIC board meetings, where a lot of these executives also participate. So, it continues.
Any striking information come across to your conversations? Opinions and what?
Not, not anything that I would necessarily feel comfortable sharing, in that it wasn't anything striking. I think there are the continuing challenges, which we've heard, and, you know, I think we continually have to figure out how to, how to meet some of those challenges, which are around cost of doing business, not just in this area, but across the state. And transportation continues to be a big, big piece of that. You'll see it coming up in future meeting, the housing study that will come before you. We've, there is some interesting information in there, some of the pieces that have come out of that, that the, either quality or availability of housing hasn't necessarily deterred people from recruiting people to the area, but if they don't find what they want in Bennington, they easily are able to find it in other communities that are surrounding the area. So, it doesn't necessarily hurt the recruitment effort, but it certainly hurts our ability to attract those people to live in Bennington. And you'll see more of that come out in the housing plan.
Okay.
When Michael saw a question earlier today when we were going through the warrants, the lead generation fund, wasn't it a success with other towns, and what do you anticipate seeing?
Yeah, so, I, the good part is that I think we're in the same situation that you just approved, which is, we're gonna try it for a year, and we'll see how that works for us. We're in a unique position because we're able to, the overall bill for the level of service we're getting is somewhere close to $9,000 typically for an annual subscription, but because of specific plan, you know, program that they have, we've been able to partner with other communities. So, we're partnering with Rutland, and we're partnering with Green Mountain Regional Development Corporation, and so, that allows us to split that cost. And BCIC is coming up with half the cost on their end. Because of the work that we've done around this table, we felt, you know, the type of lead generation is what we're looking for. So, instead of the, you know, we're just gonna spray and pray method, and see if we can, you know, find something that comes through to us, this allows us the opportunity, and I'm happy to talk more offline as well, but this allows us the opportunity to qualify the leads. So, if there are RFPs that are being presented through the company, WEDA simply acts as the filtering agent, so it essentially pulls in a number of different RFPs for different businesses looking to start up in different locations, and we can either go in and search through those, but if they find, we also have a rep through the company, so if they see something come across that they think would be a good fit for our area, they'll identify it, flag it, and send it to us. I've talked with, we had a specific conversation with Jamie Stewart, who is the equivalent to Peter Odiana up in Rutland, and he had nothing but positive things to say about the organization. He's the one who initially opened up the conversation with us, and he said he's received more leads through them than he ever has through the state of Vermont. Whether they all cross the finish line, you know, that's a different story, but even Friday, I got an email saying that there was a company that was looking for a place in the northeast, and they gave a list of qualifications, and so, I have a time set up with Peter to sit down and look to see whether or not we'd be a good fit for that company. So, they're already starting, and essentially, what happens is, this, instead of us needing to spend the money and attend the different trade shows and expos, this company essentially does that. And they troll through the different prospects and identify leads, but they also have a presence at these different trade shows where they collect leads from different businesses, and then they funnel them through. So, I think it'll be a positive thing. I mean, again, we'll, we'll, we have the opportunity to reassess after a year and figure out if it's something we wanna continue.
With the shared partnership in mind, I know previously we talked about looking at our neighboring estates and see how we compare, and maybe that was unfair, because it is at the state level, and so, our impact would be minor compared to what could happen in Montpelier. But considering the fact that we're sharing these resources, we are going to be in competition with our surrounding areas. Has any research been done to try and figure out how we stand next to our competition, being, you know, Rutland, Brattleboro, Southern Vermont in general?
I, they all, we all have the same pool of incentives typically that come from the state, in terms of, and Dan, feel free to jump in if I'm leaving something out, but we haven't, we haven't had specific conversations about competition and how we compare, but there have been conversations about using that, using the different sources of funding, and there aren't necessarily different sources of funding for different areas. You know, what we find, the things that either benefit an area or detract from an area, sometimes are outside our control. So, for instance, one component of a Brattleboro area is their proximity to a major highway, 91. You know, or the availability of industrial space, or commercial retail space. So, there's a number of different factors. It even talks about population and median income of the population.
Would you be able to, I'm not trying to throw more work into play, but would you be able to kind of list the things that we fall short on, and list the areas that we also are outstanding on, so that maybe as a board, we can try and address the areas that we are short on? I know we can't do much about the, you know, the highway, but there might be other areas where we say, okay, let's dedicate some time and resources to looking for solutions here, whatever it might be. That way, if someone does come to Vermont, because Vermont is a difficult place for people to want to move to for any, any business, so.
Maybe, and.
Do decide to.
I'll throw this out to the members who are on the Economic Development Partners, but that may be a good exercise, because I'm thinking some of that information already exists in the economic development plan, because we did an opportunity and challenges. So, I'll just see if I can pull most of that, but it may be a future topic area for the Economic Development Partners to talk about, and see if there's anything missing off the list.
One of the things that we talked about earlier today was getting in contact with a corporate reload company like Jones Lang Wooten, or Ernst &amp; Young has one, KPMG has one, to spend a little money, have somebody come here for a couple of days and say, all right, now, what do you have, what do you don't really have, that companies that I represent, I being whoever they are, would be interested in, and what does it take to get what you don't have? That's, it's a bit of a cost, but it gives you some answers in fairly quick, in fairly quick time. Just a couple of questions from me in terms of the WEDA, outside of ourselves and Rutland, who else in Vermont uses it? What other, what other, what other development corporation uses it?
I'm not, I'm not sure it's the best business strategy, but my understanding is, when you have a designee for a specific area. Only they can open it up to other members. So, in Vermont, the designee for Vermont was the Rutland Regional Development Corporation. So, in all honesty, they could have prevented others from participating, and I'm not sure about the whole corporate policy for WEDA, but that's my understanding, and so, their willingness to open it has, so, in Vermont, now, there's only, in terms of those involved with WEDA, there's only three. And so, Bennington, Rutland, and Green Mountain.
Great. One other question, could we go back to the conversations you've been having with existing employers? Talk a little bit about the, about, about the receptivity that you've experienced. Talk without revealing anything critical you might have heard about the kind of attitudes you're seeing, and the kind of, the kind of message you're getting away from it.
There, and there may be some overlap from conversations we've had from the Economic Development Partners Recruitment and Retention Committee, who's also done some of this. The receptivity has been good, and I, I'll be honest, there haven't been many conversations yet, and some of them have been in passing, but I have, we've been playing phone tag with Global Z, and we're putting a date on the calendar, you know, but in, I brought it up at the last BCIC board meeting, and there were a number of people who said, just let me know when, and we're happy to, to set up a time. And so, the opportunity is there, I think the Economic Development Partners Recruitment and Retention Committee has also talked about wanting to go sector by sector. So, I think there's also making sure we're not duplicating efforts, as long as we're asking the same questions and we're getting the information we need. I think, I also wanted, I wanna be sensitive to the fact that I didn't want people to see us as only reaching out after a company decided to close and to leave, as if.
Please don't go.
Yeah, we're only interested when something bad happens, you know, so, and now, we're playing catch-up. But I think we're at a point, and I've been, like I said, contacting different people, so, the next two on my list are Global Z and Abacus.
It's, it's just good client bedside manner, and they are clients of the town in a sense. Thank you.
James?
Thanks, Michael.
I think Dan had something he wanted to mention.
Yeah, just something quick, some good. And also, we were already aware, but on Friday, Michael and I, and Donald Campbell, and Jim Henderson went up to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board to plead our case for funding for the Morgan Street Wetlands project, and we were successful. We got about $120,000-plus dollars, which represents about two-thirds of the project cost. We'll be entering the fundraising phase, so we'll be reaching out to folks, hoping we can get some volunteers to help us with that, and we're also gonna be doing a management plan. So, this is a little press release that Michael prepared, so I can just hand those around for you folks just to see. And so, we're gonna be, we've got the first big step under our belt, and hopefully, we can get that fundraising out of the next few months, and we can get that project purchased. But, um, some good news, and hopefully, we can, we can build on that, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Dan. All right, we have need for executive session for legal discussion and a contract.
So moved.
Motion to go into executive session, do I have a second? James, okay. Justin and James. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, both, all in favor?
Jumping on that one.
It's unanimous. All right, we're in executive session. Those who are not involved in that conversation, I'm gonna need you to leave the building. Thank you.